Come on, they can. You guys there?
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call upon the meeting of the Planning Commission to order, please, at six oh three P M. Planning Commission Secretary, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Flores?
Present.
Commissioner Cervantes?
Present.
Commissioner Ayala? Vice Chair Jimenez?
Present.
And Chair Sarno?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance, can you guys all please rise? I would like to call upon...
What's your name?
Me?
You.
Juan.
Juan, come lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, come on. Come on. Ready? Yeah, lead us up.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Do you know it was a test?
Huh?
Do you know it was a test?
Yeah, see? They're all here, they want to do something, so.
All right, next, Ex parte communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any discussion, disclosure regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings. Are there any ex parte communications?
None.
None?
None.
Public comments on non-agenda and non-public hearing agenda items. At this time, the general public may address the planning on both non-agenda and non-public hearing agenda items. Comments relating to the public hearing item will be heard during the public hearing. Please be aware that the maximum time allocated for members of the public to speak shall not exceed three minutes per speaker. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking action or entering extended discussions on topics not listed on the agenda. Please show the courtesy of others and direct all your comments to the chairperson. Planning Commission Secretary, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak?
Not for this item.
I will now close public comment and move on to the next item. All matters or consent agenda, consent calendar. All matters under the consent calendar are considered to be routine. Any consent items a planning commissioner wishes to discuss should be designated at this time. All other items may be approved in a single motion. For consent items numbers one and two, is there a motion and a second for the approval of these consent items?
I'll move.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Planning Commission Secretary, roll call, please. A roll, vote?
I'd like to note that Commissioner Ayala is in. So now for roll call, Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Cervantes?
Aye.
Commissioner Ayala?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
And Chair Sarno?
Aye.
I'll pass.
So ordered, there is fourteen days' appeal period for any wishing to appeal these matters. Public hearing, we will now begin with item number three on the agenda. At this time, I will open the public hearing at six oh five P M. I now call upon Associate Planner Jimmy Wong to introduce this item.
Testing. All right. Good evening, Commissioner. Item number three, tentative parcel map T P M number eight four five zero two to subdivide a existing twenty-six point seven seven acre parcel, A P N eight zero zero five dash zero one five dash zero five one into two parcel and create a new cul-de-sac at the Easterly end of Hawkins Street. Development plan approval, D P A case number one zero zero six to construct a new plus or minus two hundred ninety-eight thousand three hundred seventy-three square foot concrete tilt-up industrial building and related improvement on parcel one and D P A case number one zero zero seven to construct a new plus or minus two hundred eighty-six thousand three hundred and five square foot concrete tilt-up industrial building and related improvement on parcel number two and certification of the final environmental impact report, E I R. A little background on the project and applicant information. The project is located at the east end of Hawkins Street with a accessory parcel number of eight zero zero five dash oh one five dash zero five one. The applicant for this project is E P D Solutions, representing the owner of Bridgeland Resource L L C. This site is designated for industrial under the general plan and is zone M two for heavy manufacturing. Currently, the property contains a mix of active plug, idle, and cancel oil well. So here's the general plan land use map on the left. As you can see, the surrounding property are designated as industrial with the exception of the village in the south side of Telegraph. And the right side is the zoning map. As you can see, there are M two heavy manufacturing zone in the surrounding property with the exception of residential also on the south side of Telegraph Row. So a little background on the property, the site has been an oil field since the early nineteen hundreds with a long history of oil extraction activity. On September tenth, two thousand eighteen, Brightburn, the previous owner, submitted a tentative parcel map number seven eight two three two, which was approved by the Planning Commission. This approval allowed for the subdivision of a forty-four point six seven acre site, consolidated seven parcel into five different parcel. As part of that approval, the project included a plan for the construction of four industrial building with the D P A number of nine oh three to nine three three. So I'm not going to read the proposed project again, but the current proposal is to seek the development of the remaining twenty-six point seven seven acre site, which is parcel number five, and the proposed entitlement include a tenant parcel map and two development plan approval for two new building. So the first entitlement is tenant parcel map number eight four five zero two. So the proposed entitled, the proposed tenant parcel map would subdivide the subject parcel, which is approximately twenty-six point seven seven acre into two parcel. Parcel number one will be approximately thirteen point four five acre. Parcel number two is approximately thirteen point zero nine acre. And please note that dedication of the cul-de-sac along the easternly end of Hawkins Street is required as part of the conditional approval. And for that reason, the two parcel does not add up for the twenty-six point seven seven acre. The second entitlement is development plan approval, case number one zero zero six. That's the building number one, is the north only parcel that will be created from the proposed tentative parcel map. The proposed development will include the construction of a plus or minus two hundred ninety-eight thousand three hundred seventy-three square foot industrial building. It will have a minimum setback of thirty, fifty-three feet from Hawkins Street. Additionally, the building will have thirty-nine loading door and one grade level door. All of them are placed along the south elevation. And lastly, there will be two trash enclosure along the southernly property line. The, the blue area is the loading, loading dock area, and then the two little yellow square is where the trash enclosure going to be located. So for access to internal vehicle access, both truck and passenger vehicle will be able to access the site from Hawkins Street. Additionally, passenger vehicle will have access to the site via share access easement through Santa Fe Spring Row. And it's important to note that the Santa Fe Spring Row is limited to passenger vehicle only and is limited to a right turn going in and going out. So there will not be any left turn in from this. Here's a little map of the truck route and where all the access point to the site.
I have a quick question. So the truck route, they won't allow trucks to go right on Norwalk from Hawkins?
No, they, the truck route is going through from Telegraph to Norwalk to Hawkins, but they won't be able to turn in from...
No, turn in, exit?
Exit. There's no limit on that, yeah. So, so in terms of parking, the development is required to have a total of two ninety-six parking stall to meet this requirement. The project will provide a total of three hundred forty-five parking stall, including two hundred sixty-eight standard stall, sixty-nine E V ready stall, and eight accessible stall. And for trailer parking, the development is required to have ten trailer parking stall and to, and the proposed project will provide a total of forty-six, which is highlighted in the blue area. And for landscaping, the project is required to provide a total of twenty thousand one hundred seventy-four square feet of parking, of landscaping based on the parking area and the street furniture. And the proposed development will exceed this requirement by providing a total of forty-six thousand six hundred and one square foot of landscaping. And to further screen the truck activity, a fourteen-foot-high screening wall will be installed along the east and south side of the loading area. Additionally, an eight-foot wrought iron fence will be placed along the property line.
Is the position of this building is closer to the Santa Fe Springs, or is this?
This one is Santa Fe Spring, it's the north parcel. For elevation, the proposed building will have a maximum height of fifty-two feet. To enhance its design, various architectural element will be used, including glazing, material change, canopy, pop-out, and height variation. This is the south and north elevation. As you can see, it's really long. To break up the elongated elevation, the applicant have proposed material change canopy pop-out and also a center feature along the north elevation that will break up the lawn and blank wall. The last entitlement is development plan approval, case number one zero zero seven, building number two. Here's the proposed site plan. The proposed development will include a construction of a twenty, two hundred eighty-six thousand three hundred and five square feet industrial building. It will also set back a minimum of fifty-three feet from Hawkins Street. The building will have a total of thirty-six loading door and one grade level door, and all of them are placed along the south, the north elevation. And lastly, they're also providing two trash enclosure along the north property line. So the loading area will be in the blue square, and then the two trash enclosure area is highlighted in yellow as well. So to access to this property, this parcel number two, similar to parcel number one, truck and passenger vehicle will be able to access the site from Hawkins Street. Additionally, passenger vehicle will also be able to access a share easement through Telegraph Row. And similar to building number one, the Telegraph Row access will only be of passenger vehicle, and it's also a right turn in and right turn out only as well. So here's another look at how the truck route and how the access point to the site. So as you can see, number six and seven is only for passenger vehicle, and all truck have to go through the truck route highlighted in green. As for parking, a total of two hundred ninety parking stall is required. The proposed project will provide a total of two hundred ninety-three stall, two hundred twenty-six standard, fifty-nine E V ready stall, and eight accessible stall. A total of nine trailer parking is required, however, the project is providing forty-six trailer parking, which is highlighted in blue. So similar to building number one, landscape will be provided throughout the whole site at a total of thirty-eight thousand four hundred and nine square feet. In addition to that, a fourteen-foot-high screening wall will be provided along the loading area, and the surrounding property line will be provided with an eight-foot-high wrought iron fence. This is the elevation of building number two. The design is similar to building number one to make sure that it looked like a cohesive development with a maximum height of fifty-two similar to building number one. So similar to building number one, this is the south, north and south elevation. The south elevation is facing Telegraph Row, so it might be a little bit visible from the street, however, the applicant is providing various architectural element to break up that long facade, which also include a center feature that will break up the lawn blank wall. Here is a three D rendering of the proposed development. As you can see, both building are similar in design and provide multiple glazing element that provide high-quality development. So for SEQA process, the city of Santa Fe Spring is the lead agency overseeing the project. Under the SEQA guideline, the proposed development qualify as a project and also require an environmental impact report due to potential significant environmental impact. So a notice of preparation was circulated from May thirteenth to June twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Additionally, a public scoping meeting was held on May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, five P M. in the city council chamber with no attendee were present at that time. Following this, the draft environmental impact report was made available for public review from November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four to January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. We received four comment letter, and the response to those comment letter was included as part of the chapter two of the final E I R. So just a quick summary of the environmental impact. So the environmental impact report identifies seven mitigation designated to reduce environmental impact to less than significant level in key area including air quality, geology and soil, hazard and hazardous material, and tribal cultural resource. Additionally, one mitigating measure is proposed for transportation, however, the impact remains significant and unavoidable even with the one mitigating measure. So to ensure compliance and accountability, a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, M M R P, has been established. This program include a total of seven mitigating measure along with a detailed plan, program, and policy outlined in section four of the final E I R., which can be found in exhibit B of attachment E. So quickly go over the significant and avoidable impact on transportation. The project V M T, vehicle mile travel, impact has been identified, and the home base work V M T per employee is estimated at twenty-six point five, which exceed the threshold of eighteen point three by forty-four point nine percent. So this result in a significant impact both at project level and surrounding property. To address this mitigating measure, T R A dash one has been proposed, however, with this measure is only expect to reduce the V M T by only twenty-three point eight percent. So even with the mitigating measure, the threshold of the V M T is over the eighteen point three threshold. Based on that result, even with the mitigating measure, the transportation impact is significant and unavoidable. So as part of the environmental impact report, we also analyzed several alternatives. The first option is for no project, so no development alternative. The first option will avoid all project-related impact, but will not meet the objective of the proposed development or the general plan. The second option is to reduce the project by fifty percent reduction in project size. That will minimize the air quality impact, however, it will not, it will still have transportation impact that will be significant and affordable. And then the third alternative is to have an alternative design of the project, which include removing building number two and only construct building number one for manufacturing and office use and adding storage yard on parcel number two. However, this alternative layout does not reduce the traffic impact, and ultimately, while these alternative were considered, they do not fully resolve the key environmental concern while meeting the project objective. So based on all that, staff has determined that despite the unavoidable environmental impact, the project economic, legal, social, and technology benefit outweigh the adverse event. These benefit include job creation, economic growth, and effective use of industrial land to support the city long-term development goal. Each of these consideration on its own provides significant justification for project approval under the Public Resource Code and SEQA guideline. For more detail on the statement of overriding consideration, you can refer to section eleven of exhibit C in attachment E. For public hearing notice, a notice was sent out, mailed out on January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Additionally, it was posted on the City Hall, Town Center Hall, and Library. Oh, sorry. A notice was also published in the newspaper on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. As of today, we did receive two common letter regard, email and letter regarding the project. The first one is from the president of North American Plywood Corporation, which is located at one, two, three, four, three Hawkins Street in Santa Fe Spring. He has inquiry related to the property tax concerning Hawkins Street. And the second comment letter was received from the executive director of Advocate for the Environment. He initially submitted a comment letter on January eighth, two thousand twenty-five, but has since withdrawn his concern and no longer opposed the project. So for finding and recommendation, so staff find and determine that the proposed tenant parcel map fully meet all the criteria outlined in the subdivision map back. Number one, it provide consistence, is consistent with the general plan and zoning. It also does not affect any type of public easement and also meet all regulatory compliance. And for the development plan approval, staff have find that the proposed project is consistent with the zoning, which is M two heavy manufacturing zone. Also, the design is consistent with the surrounding project in Santa Fe Spring, and the proposed project have emphasis on landscaping, fencing, and other element that will be well integrated to the surrounding property. Therefore, staff is recommending certifying the final E I R, finally, E I R and approve for, and approving the associate mitigating monitoring and reporting program, fact of finding as required by SEQA guideline, section one five zero nine one, and the statement of overriding consideration. In addition, staff also recommending approving tenant parcel map eight four five zero two, D P A one zero zero six, D P A one zero zero seven, subject to the condition of approval as stated within the resolution two eight one dash two thousand twenty-five. And lastly, staff recommend approving resolution number two eight one dash two thousand twenty-five, which incorporate the Planning Commission finding action regarding this matter. That conclude my presentation. I do have the applicant, and they would like to present their project as well.
So just for formatting purposes, for the commissioners' benefit, I think just to allow for free-flowing questions, we had recommended that the applicant follow staff in a presentation, and then all questions could be addressed after that.
Okay. So we're going to call up the applicant?
Please state your name and residence.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners. My name is Dane Plangin. I'm a project manager with E P D Solutions on behalf of representing Bridgeland Resources. I would like to start by thanking, you know, Kwan, Jimmy, Vince, for all the time and effort over the past three-plus years as we look at this property and hopefully bring good opportunity to the city of Santa Fe Springs. Jimmy was extremely detailed in his presentation, so he covered a lot, but I'll go ahead and touch on a few areas that I would like to provide some further detail to. So kind of as we discussed, the project overview, twenty-six point seven seven acres, heavily disturbed right now, multiple miscellaneous supporting structures for the oil and gas operations that have been ongoing there for some time. The goal with this development and its implementation would be to subdivide the property into two parcels, as Jimmy mentioned, approximately thirteen point four or five acres and thirteen point oh nine acres. Project location is northwest corner of Telegraph in Santa Fe Springs. And just a little bit about Bridgeland Resources is between property owner and/or rights to the surface, surface rights of properties, about eighty acres in Santa Fe Springs that they own and operate on. Some of those properties have already been envisioned into their new business plan of reimagining what it looks like and what is the highest and best use or better use of these properties within the city. And through cooperation with the city of Santa Fe Springs, we've been successful in developing and moving forward that initiative. Last year, I was before you in representing Bridgeland on a smaller twenty thousand square foot building right down the street on the northeast corner of Telegraph and Freeman, so. So that's been approved and we're currently working to abandon those wells and, and move forward with the, the final engineering. In addition to that, um, there are, I'll come back here. I want to jump. Um, in addition, in addition to that, you know, this property was a conglomerate of, of a previous larger parcel that was previously subdivided and, and, and since that time, you know, those buildings have, have since changed ownership, but still the commitment to, to move forward with, with development has occurred. Um, so, you know, as part of the, the approval that occurred in two thousand eighteen, uh, approximately thirty nine oil wells have since been abandoned, uh, per Calgem standard. Of those, you know, building one is in its final engineering phase, uh, currently working through construction drawings. Building two and three is scheduled for completion in Q three of two thousand twenty five and Q, and, uh, building four i- is, um, set for completion in, in Q four of two thousand twenty six. So, um, you know, further in the commitment to, to look, you know, for new uses there. The existing site conditions, there's about a hundred active idle or canceled oil wells on the property, um, extremely costly to, to properly abandon these, you know, per Calgem and city of Santa Fe Springs Fire Department standard and, and ultimately, you know, with the approval of this, of this property will, you know, begin the initiative to, to properly, um, cancel and enclose those wells out.
Can you, can you give us an estimate of what it costs to abandon one well?
Yeah, maybe at the conclusion of my presentation, I, I do have a representative who kind of runs the, um, the oil production side for Bridgeland, um, and he would be able to provide some further clarification on the estimated cost of that.
No problem. Thank you.
Some existing site condition photos. Architectural design as Jimmy, uh, presented on some renderings, um, this would be the building south, um, off Telegraph Road. This would be the office component there. And then off Hawkins, kind of broken that up to where you could see the, the westernly facing and the easterly facing building. I know that there was a question during Jimmy's presentation regarding trucks, um, and kind of the path of travel for those. And so ultimately, uh, off the six oh five freeway, there's an, uh, on ramp and off ramp directly there off Telegraph Road, which the trucks would access. So, uh, to the question of restricting traffic or would there be traffic, uh, heading east of Hawkins, there, there really wouldn't be a scenario of that unless there was a truck driver that was taking it, an abnormal route, uh, to and from the project site. But the, the, the most efficient path to and from the freeway is going to be, um, making a left hand turn onto Hawkins, a right hand turn onto Santa Fe Springs Road to the six oh five freeway. Additionally, just on that note would be, um, that, yeah, there are, there is no truck access off of Santa Fe Springs Road or Telegraph Road. So we have secured easements through those properties, um, that would allow for passenger vehicles and emergency vehicles to access. Uh, part of that was due to fires requirements to provide a secondary access to each of the respective buildings, but no truck traffic will be able to access from that. Community benefit, um, I think one of the largest, you know, things that we look for kind of this opportunity is job creation. Um, so we're, we're estimating about, you know, three hundred and eighty five permanent jobs that will be able to be brought forward for the citizens and surrounding area of Santa Fe Springs. Um, in addition to that, we're obviously well represented, you know, this evening by labor and so we, we definitely made a commitment to use labor union, uh, work, you know, for the construction of, of the project. Economic growth, um, tax revenue, expanded employment opportunities, sustainability using state of the art, you know, technology, building code and, um, title twenty four standards to ensure, you know, energy efficiency, sustainability and accessibility and infrastructure improvement. So, um, a- as Jimmy mentioned, Hawkins has not been fully completed and so with the opportunity to develop this project, we'll be able to dedicate the remaining portion of, of the Hawkins cul-de-sac to, to fully construct that roadway within the city's limits. Pretty significant, uh, development and impact fees, you know, surplus of one million dollars and estimated about nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars of plan check fees that will, you know, have to go through. In addition to, uh, all the, the costs that Bridgeland will, will be responsible for in terms of the abandonment and proper closure of, of all those existing wells there. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to address any questions that you have. Um, and if you'd like me to address the one on, on the cost to abandon the wells, it can get Bridgeland's representative here.
Just a question, just to give us an insight of, uh, what it actually costs and the expense, because it's very expensive to, uh, cancel these wells and, and get it up to, uh, A Q M D's, uh, standard, C Q.
V J will be able to address that for you.
Go ahead.
Name is Vijay. I work with Bridgeland Resources. Uh, it's just to address your question directly. Uh, the wells have varying types and nature that we have on this lot. Out of those hundred wells, there's about forty wells which are used as injectors where we're injecting water down into the ground. And then about, you know, thirty of them are active producers and the other wells are idle wells. So depending on the well, it could vary between two hundred thousand to four hundred thousand per well on how much it could cost us to abandon just the wells and then taking out all the remaining infrastructure to be able to put the buildings in. Uh, you know, we could anticipate anywhere between fifteen to eighteen million dollars of abandonment cost for this site.
Thank you. Does any commissioners have any questions for him or nothing?
I do have a question in regards to the, and maybe we don't have the answer to that, but in regards to the, uh, withdrawn, uh, concern by the environment, the environmentalist, Dean, do we know what that concern was?
Ultimately, I, I believe that there was a, a comment letter that was received regarding the greenhouse gas impacts that would be in air quality and greenhouse gas impacts that would be generated from the proposed project. We had an opportunity to connect with that organization, better bring them up to speed on some of the, um, positive, uh, uh, impacts from the, the closure of the existing wells and newly proposed and that addressed their concern.
And I think with the, the letter that we got for the, um, sales tax for Hawkins Street, I believe we have a solution.
Yeah, definitely. Ernest here will be able to address that in terms of, uh, the cooperation that Bridgeland's willing to make to get that addressed.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ernest Guadion on behalf of Bridgeland Resources, I am the attorney for Bridgeland Resources. Uh, after discussing with, um, both the city and the applicant and Bridgeland, we have decided to add an additional condition of approval for, to make sure that Bridgeland, that this project pays its pro rata share going forward of any assessments due underneath this bond. I, I believe we will have to, since there is not a specific number known yet, we will have to work with staff to determine that, but we will be paying that going forward.
And you can get that information back to us, right, Kwan?
I have a couple of questions. Um, this property, uh, has been used as oil production since the early nineteen hundreds. What, where is it, nineteen ten, nineteen fifty? I mean, how far back?
The initial was more driven in the nineteen twenties.
Okay, and standards were different. So I just want to, for the record, state that I'm all for community economic development, but I'm also worried about like latent impacts from seepage or environmental. And maybe this is for Mr. Wong, but who's going to oversee? You said the city's going to lead the project management. Who oversees that from the city?
If you're referring to the M M R P, um, it, I think the M M R P specifies which mitigation measures and who's responsible for it. Um, I believe majority of them are, um, the planning, the community development department for the, the city.
I mean, do we have somebody that's qualified to make sure that the hazard mitigation plan is like fully compliant? Cause standards back in the nineteen twenties till now were just far and beyond.
I, I think this is, uh, to answer your question, so the, um, Calgem, the California Geological Energy Management Division, that implements all downhole operations throughout, uh, you know, for, for oil and gas wells in California. Uh, we did environmental studies on this property to determine what type of seepage might have actually occurred in the past. Uh, all of that was, um, mitigated with, there'll be some soil removed of any dirty soils that are there. I believe that we have a, um, a mitigation plan for once the, uh, property actually under, starts undergoing construction. But there are a number of state regulatory agencies that would step in to the extent that there was any contamination on the site that needed to be remediated.
And I believe our fire department also helps in that.
Yes, the fire department will oversee all of the well abandonments that do occur i- as well as the California Geological Energy.
And I think that's kind of my question, who from, you know, our jurisdiction gives the final authority that says it's good?
Our fire, our fire department.
Okay.
Yeah, so for most project, I just want to add, um, our fire department with, um, the plant department will oversee, um, so the document is submitted and make sure that like, um, our consultant had review all the document to meet our city code. Um, so usually we will have an indemnity agreement afterward to bring into the city council for approval.
Essentially, once, once everything is done and certified and fire, all the agencies have approved it, we still, to protect the city, require indemnification to be, uh, signed and, and approved.
Yeah. It's the same process as when they did the Goodman, uh, development on, uh, Florence and Bloomfield, so, yeah. Thank you.
I do have a job, a question in regards to the three hundred and sixty plus jobs that are going to be created. Typically, we have these big projects that come to the city and there's this promise of jobs, um, for the local residents. But how do we know how many of the residents actually do get these jobs? Are, are local residents going to be prioritized for these jobs or are we going to have individuals from other cities?
Obviously, the, the development in this instance is speculative, so we don't know the end user determining the, the need for the number of jobs, though through reporting that's been published eyes, you know, we, we're at a minimum, are able to determine that approximately three hundred and eighty five jobs would be applicable. Again, you know, the, the end user will really depend on that. You know, based on the end user and, and their needs, there's number of resources that they can go through and the residents can utilize to, you know, apply for those jobs. So to answer your question, no, there's no requirement of the project to, um, offer these job opportunities to citizens of Santa Fe Springs.
So are these jobs intended for the, the build of this facility or are these, are we counting these jobs after that property has been leased?
After.
After. Okay, so I think that that's important that we keep that in mind for the person or the, the business that takes on that building, that we set that standard so that our residents could take priority for those jobs instead of people from other cities.
What we, I think we would be happy to do is include a condition of approval prior to, you know, occupancy that, um, posted these jobs through a, a city resource, um, in which your guys' residents would be able to, you know, be more tuned into.
Our chamber, you team up with maybe our chamber and then they can social, uh, put on social network and stuff like that to.
Yeah, we're happy to cooperate with, with chambers or whatever, you know, business forum is available that is, you know, providing these opportunities to, to residences of Santa Fe Springs. I just, I, I think the, in, in work in good faith, you know, through that effort, I just don't know if we could exclusively o- offer these job opportunities to Santa Fe Springs residents.
No, you can't exclusive, but.
Right.
You can make your best effort to try to hire. That's all we ask. Anybody else? Uh, thank you.
No, thank you for, thank you for your time.
We will now move to commissioner questions and comments. Does any member of the commission have any other questions or comments for staff or the applicant? Nothing else? I just have a comment. I look forward to working with Bridgeland. You know, on the council side, it was, you know, we have this land and we have to develop it and I'm glad it's starting to get developed because this does help our city grow as, as a community, um, with jobs, with e, e-commerce and, and other things to that nature. But it's better than just seeing a bunch of oil wells up there and, and really, it improves every factor of, of businesses, housing, everything all around us. So I look forward to working with you guys and hopefully we can get much more, uh, buildings built and work together. So thank you, guys.
Yeah, I second that. I think anytime that we can take an eye sore away from the city is great. Um, we appreciate you choosing Santa Fe Springs as well.
Same here. Thank you and thank you to the union for coming out. It's a pleasure to see you all here.
All right, um, we will now open public comments for this item. Planning Commission Secretary, do we receive any speaking cards or written comments for this item?
Yes, we have one speaker, Frankie Rodriguez.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Frankie Rodriguez. I'm a representative with the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters and I am here to express our strong support for this industrial development proposed by Bridgeland Resources. Uh, we believe this project is crucial for our region, offering significant economic benefits and sustainable growth. A vital aspect of this development is the potential for local job creation. Our members are eager to work on this project and stable employment opportunities for skilled tradespeople and essential for families and the local economy. Um, just to give you a little insight, I'm a product of this city. I was born and raised here in Santa Fe Springs. I grew up three blocks from here. Uh, my family was here before Santa Fe Springs was incorporated in nineteen fifty seven. So we, we are still here in the city.
Better rent.
And, um, there you go. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm proud to be from this city, just like I'm a proud union carpenter, just like these men and women that are here to support this project right here. Uh, currently we have roughly eighteen active union members that reside in the city of Santa Fe Springs. And, you know, me, me being out in the field before, I used to take my wife and daughter to the projects that I built and sometimes these projects were two hours away. So a project like this in our city would give those, those local residents the opportunity to take their family two minutes away and be proud of what they built in their city. And, um, you know, that would also give us an opportunity to showcase our skills and, and what we do. And as far as the local hire, we're working with the developers and they're committed to hire local, local hires. So, um, in conclusion, we urge the planning commission to approve this development. Um, this project presents an opportunity to create jobs and provide a positive impact on the economy of Santa Fe Springs. And thank you, Commissioners, for your time and your support on this important development.
No other speakers.
Thank you. I will now close public hearing. What is it now? What, where am I at? This is now time for deliberation by commissioners. If there are any no further commissioners, questions or comments, I will now close the public hearing. Oh. At seven forty seven, oh, six forty seven? Is there, uh, may I have a motion to approve the items T M, T P M, number eight four five oh two, D P A case number one zero zero six and D P A case number one zero zero seven and adopt resolution number two eight one dash two zero two five, which incorporates the planning commission findings and actions regarding this matter? May I have a first?
I'll have a first.
A second?
Second.
So I have a first and a second. Planning Commission Secretary, could I please conduct a roll call?
Commissioner Cervantes? Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Ayala?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chair Sarno?
Aye.
Passes five zero.
I just want to clarify that the motion to approve included the two conditions discussed during, uh, the, the meeting and first being work with staff in the chamber to promote, um, job availability for, uh, the Santa Fe Springs community and second being, uh, Bridgeland to work with staff on a, a pro rata share moving forward, uh, for Hawkins Street.
Yes. So, so ordered, there's a fourteen day appeal period for anyone wishing to appeal this matter. Uh, staff communications, does staff have any announcements?
Yes, I, I have one. Um, placed, uh, in front of you is a flyer for the twenty twenty five Planning Commissioners Academy. It will be March fifth through the seventh. Um, if you are interested in going or if you're able to go, let me know so I can get you registered. And that, that is all.
Thank you. Uh, do any commissioners have any comments or something to report on?
I just want to say that it was pretty rare to hear that we have, uh, so many of our residents are going to be part of this project. Um, we've had many projects presented here in front of us and I, I think this is the first time that I've heard of so many locals to be part of it. So thank you for sharing.
On another note, um,
On another note, as part of being a commissioner, I'm also part of an organization called LEAF. It's the Little Lake Educational and Achievement Foundation. We raise money to give it back to the schools every year. And we are going to be having our second quarter mania, which is known as margaritas and tacos, adults only. So we'll be passing out, I'd like to pass out some flyers. Love for you guys to attend. Find babysitters. Come and enjoy. Good night. Out.
Joe? I already have this.
Donations accepted.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah. I also want to commend the, the union workers, you know, supporting the developers and the solidarity that you guys come. You know, when I walked in, I, I saw the positive energy out in the parking lot. I didn't know if we were doing a project out there, but it's good to see that, you know, the skilled workforce is together, you know, during work, after work. So I think that's great. So I would want to commend you guys.
It was a TikTok.
Yeah, so I would also like to say thank you for coming out. My son and my son-in-law are both union workers, so it's good to, it's good to see you guys.
I'll just say, you guys had me with the pledge of allegiance. He did, he did it all. So no, thank you guys for what you guys do. You come out, you show support, but you're showing support for your future too. So thank you, guys. We're here to all work together. It's a partnership. We all got to work together to, to make everybody work well and, and make money for everyone. So thank you, guys, for your solidarity and good luck with this project. And hopefully you guys can get a lot more projects here. So thank you, guys. This meeting is now adjourned at 6:50. The next meeting is on the planning commission is set for March 10th, 2025, 6:00 PM. Enjoy.